The following is a production of The Reporter, Delaware County's leading news source.
Good afternoon, everybody. Before I introduce to the EDP, let's remind all of you about the IRP coming up in July. We won't have another board meeting before that. So you should see posters and signs. You can give people the information, have them call the office. And all of you should have received an invitation today to our dinner on the 20th so that we can add to the military with time to help us. So I wanted to make that plug.
And we are resending the link so that the supervisors can RSVP for this.
Not to this. Well, that's the one from 13. That's the Army's link.
Okay, so the supervisors that didn't see it the first time take notice of that.
Right, so that's distinguished visitors day. That is why the staff from the Pentagon will be here. The governor will not be here, but she is sending her representative. And the lieutenant governor is trying to clear this day to come. So they may or may not be here, but there is a lecture involved in that day and the invitation to that, along with the Medal of Honor winner presentation, Medal of Honor recipient presentation, and the bridge dedication will be taking place as well. So there's a lot going on on the 13th. But the invitation you got here is the dinner sponsored by you guys to thank the military for their service and time for coming here. So I'm hoping most of you can attend that as well. So with that, I'd like to introduce to you Paul Rush. He is with the Department of Environmental Protection. And he is here with you today.
Thank you, Shelley. Thank you very much, Chairman and the entire board, for having us up here today. And we're here to talk about the shutdown of the Delaware Aqueduct to make repairs, repairs that we've been working on for a very, very long time. And the Delaware Aqueduct takes water from Rondau Reservoir and brings it all the way down to the city. The world's longest tunnel, 85 miles long. And all the water that is diverted to New York City from Delaware County goes to Rondau Reservoir and goes through that, through that aqueduct. When I first started with DEP in 92, one of the first assignments I had was to visit a site in Ulster County, the town of Warson, to monitor it for signs of tunnel leakage, which the Delaware Aqueduct was leaking at that time in Warson. It was also leaking right next to the Hudson River near the Roseston Generating Plant. We had gotten a call from Central Hudson for us to go take a look at, look at that water back then in 91. And we've been working on the plan to fix it from that time. And it took us a long time to get our arms around the problem. We had such a big demand in city and for outside communities for water back then. Our peak demand in city and with outside communities occurred in 1977, when we had 1.6 billion gallons a day was the average demand. And with the numbers, even the 90s, it was up around 1.4 to 1.5 million. The Delaware Aqueduct provided so much water, we couldn't figure out a way to actually shut down the system to make a repair. So it took us a long time, you know, looking at alternate supplies. But we also benefited by improvements in technology and investments we made in infrastructure, low-flowed toilet devices. The city replaced showerheads in apartments in New York City in residence. If anyone's seen the series Seinfeld.
Yep.
Seinfeld. There was an episode that appeared in February of 1996 where Kramer's hair was, had a problem washing his hair shampooing because the showerheads had been changed out. And he ended up getting someone from Eastern Europe off the black market to improve that. But that was actually, the same time, the city was actually putting these, putting these ideas in place to reduce flow. The city also invested in metering, metering water for the consumption, which helped also reduce demand, replacing leaking water, water pipes. And the big part was just improving EPA new standards, low-flow devices, that's really changed things a lot. And today, the demand in city is under 1 billion gallons a day. And the total system is about 1.1 billion gallons a day. And that set up the conditions for us to be able to do this repair, repair project and be able to shut down our Delaware Aqueduct for about six to eight months, relying on Catskill Aqueduct and on the Croton System during this time. So John Villgram, who is our Director of Public Outreach here in the watershed, he's been going around all the areas that are affected by our shutdown and talking about the project. And John is going to go through a presentation. And, you know, we want to share information with stakeholders. We've learned transparency is the way to go, honest conversations, even when there's disagreements. And we actually have some new information that we'll be going through on the shutdown that's going to be brought up in, of course, this presentation. So I'll turn it over to John.
Thanks, Paul.
And I'll be back when we get to the changes.
If I could, somebody has a question. You need to be for, you have a good shot. So I'm John Villgram. I'm Director of Outreach for New York City DEP's Bureau of Water Supply. As Paul mentioned, we've been going to communities throughout the Delaware watershed, the Catskill watershed, the Westchester and Croton watershed, explaining this project. Frankly, there will be some new information. I think this group will be the first to hear today. But each time we do this presentation, even if you're intimate with the watershed, there's some fascinating details, just in terms of engineering, in terms of operations of the reservoirs, the releases and the conversions themselves. But this is, just as a precursor to what I'm going to go through, this is the largest, most complex project for capital repair that the EP has ever undertaken in its history.
Each side is original, sure.
Well, as a repair project, most complex repair project. And you'll see, this has been decades to put this together. So let me get started. Some of this, I'm sure you already know, so forgive me with some of the, just the basics of the watershed. But I'm sure some of this you've not seen before and hopefully you'll find that's it. Can everyone hear me?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so again, as many of you know, the New York City Water Supply System, we're going to go just quickly give you an overview of that. I'm going to talk about the history of the leaks that we found, why we have to do the project, obviously, the solution to those leaks and that problem. We'll go through that briefly. Then critically, we have, through this final phase of the project, we have go, no-go decision-making points. And I'll explain some of those to you. Some of the background that guided us today through the construction project, through the planning phases. The shutdown management plan, which is the operations of the entire system for the eight months, which itself is an extraordinary, complex process. Not going to cover this in this presentation today for the other systems, but I would be doing shutdown operations. I've covered Delaware, but the Catskill system and the Croton system, Croton especially with 12 reservoirs in itself. That's very complex operations, much smaller. They, all the reservoirs, they're actually feeding to each other. It's kind of a complex system. It's the old system, it's the first outside New York City system we have. Quick summary, and then obviously, I would be happy to answer any questions. So New York City Water Supply System, I think you all know. We've got the Delaware system, the Catskill system, and the Croton system. Actually, part of Westchester and Putnam County is part of the Delaware and Catskill system. There are reservoirs there that are separate from the 12 Croton system reservoirs. The West Branch Reservoir, which is in the top left of Putnam County to the east of the Hudson River there, that's where all of the Delaware system water first goes, to that reservoir. From there, then it goes down to Kansiko Reservoir in Westchester, and then down to Hillview Reservoir, which is right next to the thruway. It's a 1 billion gallon, essentially a tank. It's the final stop before it goes into the city distribution tunnels. And I think you all also know that there's multiple communities that link up to the aqueduct on the way down throughout Ulster, Putnam, Westchester, and Orange Counties. So altogether, the entire system is 19 reservoirs, three controlled lakes. Capacity went full, 570 billion gallons of usable drinking water. About 1 to 1.1 billion gallons per day goes down to New York City and about a million people north of New York City in the four counties I just mentioned. And the entire watershed altogether is about the same size as the state of Delaware. Trust me, I've driven it many times. It's fast. The point of what we're doing now is clearly, it's the Delaware Aqueduct. It's the longest tunnel in the world, 85 miles from the Rondau Reservoir, which straddles the bottom part of Ulster County by Warson. From there, crosses over to the West Branch Reservoir I mentioned on the east side of the Hudson River. That's a 44-mile-long segment. It is all attached, all the way down the 85 miles, making it officially the longest tunnel in the world. But the segment we're going to be talking about today is the 44-mile segment from Rondau to West Branch, which is where all of the Canonsville, the pack and Never Sink waters end up feeding into. They all go to the Rondau, and they all go down that 44-mile-long tunnel to the West Branch Reservoir across the river. The Delaware Aqueduct is responsible for about half of the city's water supply. It's the newest of the aqueducts, and right now, they almost problem that. Spending service since 1944, kind of a key date near the end of the war. And it seems like the war, the war effort was somewhat attributable to the problems we're having now. I'll explain that in a moment. The last time we fully drained this aqueduct was in 1958. Since then, it's been constantly filled. We did do one small drawdown earlier this year. That's going to be parts of some of what we're going to be discussing today, too. Anyway, back in the 90s, early 90s, there was a power plant, a central Hudson gas electric power plant worker down in the town of Newburgh, right along the Hudson River, noticed water coming up through the ground. Obviously, it was identified that it was coming from the aqueduct separately two years later in Warson, right near the Rondau Reservoir, the bottom of the Rondau Reservoir near the dam. Another leak was found there as well. Between those two leaks, that, the Delaware Aqueduct is putting about more than 30 million gallons a day of water into the groundwater supply. It's leaking more than 30 million gallons a day. The vast majority of the leak is the one down in the town of Newburgh, right near the Hudson River. About 95% of the leak is much more of the leak up in Warson. There were difficult, this tunnel is about 600 feet below ground. The limestone down there was not as ideal as it could be when they actually dug the original tunnel about eight years ago. And a lot of the steel interlining that was used for that tunnel at the time, which reinforces the tunnel, they stopped using the steel at the point the leaks started. Again, it goes to believe that the steel was diverted to the war effort. Clearly, there was a shortage at the time, and tanks were needed. But it's where that steel ends, where these cracks first started to appear. They've been fairly consistent through the last 30 years that we've known about them. Again, just a little more visualization of the areas of leaks I'm talking about. The Hudson River, there's that about two and a half mile stretch there between two shafts that go down to the bottom where the tunnel is, and then up to Warson by the Rondau Reservoir there in Ulster County. So to investigate the leaks of the Warson, we used what's called an ROV, remotely operated vehicle. In 2015, found the leaks. We use di testing, use cameras, high-definition cameras. Three different times, back in 2004, 2004, '09, and '14, we used an autonomous underwater vehicle, like a, sort of like a torpedo. It's a very high-pressure area and a little harder to use with a tether than the ROV itself. So multiple times, we visually inspected in the water with that equipment. We tested with dye. And there's a sonar device that they can use, too, to hear where the water's coming through. Also, this year, just to add to the testing that's been done, and this is kind of critical to what we're talking about today, this year in March, we did the first partial drawdown of the Delaware Aqueduct. We brought it down to 90 feet below grade. We brought the water down to 90 feet below grade. What we needed to do as part of that is it was essentially a test run. Everything, all the capital projects we need to do as precursors to this final connection, we wanted them all in place to do this test run for the upcoming full eight-month shutdown. We were also able to, for the first time with that drawdown, have a better guide to measuring the infiltration.
Hey, John, don't go into that. Let me talk about that when we get there.
Got it. The solution, what we ended up doing was we built, this is already in place, in the last 13 years, a bypass tunnel. Built two shafts going down on both sides of the river in Newburgh, 700 feet deep. And over in the town of Wapinjir, Dutchess County, 900 feet deep. Between those two is a two and a half mile long brand-new tunnel that's waiting to connect to the, to the sound portions of the Delaware Aqueduct that's below the Hudson River. Two and a half mile stretch, so it's fairly inland on the Newburgh side. That's what the tunnel looks like. That's the actual bypass tunnel. Again, large is most complex. It's a billion-dollar project. I'm getting old, need my glasses. I think I've covered it, but I said that. Just a little more detail, connections that have to be made at either end. So the bypass tunnel was done in 2021. It's kind of a U at each end. It's almost a 90-degree curve to come in and make a connection. It's about 100 feet away from the tunnel as we speak. Right now, what has to happen is we have to connect it to the Delaware Aqueduct and essentially plug the two ends of the compromised section, decommission that, divert the water through the bypass tunnel. This would now be the Delaware Aqueduct in that area. The bypass tunnel would turn into the Delaware Aqueduct itself. At the same time we do that, we would also drive the Warson leak. That's, that's an eight-month project, making those connections and doing the guy work. So importantly, because of the complexities, because of the mass nature of the system as a whole, we've got a bunch of go, no-go decision points throughout, even throughout the shutdown, even up to the shutdown, mainly based on hydrologic conditions. Is it too dry? Is the weather, do we have enough water to augment the supply when we shut off half the city's water supply? As well as that, we also have infrastructure condition being clearly a go, no-go decision point. We've got new critical infrastructure that we're using, our newly rehabbed and upgraded infrastructure we're going to be using, that all has to run perfectly for this shutdown to be successful. If at any point we determine that any of those areas, including the supply chain, is a no-go, we always have to move to the next year for this project. So it's always going to start on October 1st. One of the go and no-go decision points in the Croton system, the smaller system, we need to see is just a data point. 6.5 billion gallons of precipitation come into the Croton system between July and September. Typical about 80% of the time we have it. Making these decisions, we use a lot of partners, National Weather Service, a few universities. We do a lot of precipitation and temperature and weather modeling and long-term forecasting. Again, not necessarily any of that's going to be the driver for a go, no-go decision, but it does help make decisions for how we operate and where we may expect to go when we do come up towards a decision. Important to know, these decisions are always made in real time. And once this project starts, once we do this eight-month shutdown, it will take anywhere between one and nine weeks to start up the Delaware Aqueduct again, if we need to bail out. So again, critical infrastructure, I mentioned, one of the key drivers of decisions. Obviously, the 44-mile-long tunnel, especially the area that's leaking up in Hudson, that's critical, as well as the new bypass tunnel. We have two upgraded pumping stations in the Croton system that's going to be taking water from the Croton system typically separate from the Delaware-Catskill system. And it will be putting that water about 200, up to 260 billion gallons a day into the lower portion of the Delaware Aqueduct. It's about a quarter of the city's supply potentially. Catskill Aqueduct, that's the other complimentary aqueduct going down to the city, that has a max capacity of 630 million gallons a day. So between the Croton system itself, your bottom story, you see is a Croton filtration plant. That is actually a filter system as opposed to all the Delaware and Catskill reservoirs, which are unfiltered. Those are the large, critical pieces that have to operate perfectly. So getting to today, had to ensure redundancy of several water supply systems in the communities north of the city. Shut off the Delaware Aqueduct. You shut off the primary supply of water for eight months, unless they have a good backup supply and you can assure it. That's a problem. So that was one of the items that we had to get done before we could actually consider doing the eight-month shutdown. Other things we had to do to get to today, we had to finalize a new connection between the Croton system and the city water supply. There's a city supply tunnel. It actually, by making that connection, it increased the ability to put another 40 million gallons a day of Croton water into the city supply. We had to enhance tunnel de-watering pump capacity. And we had to make upgrades to the pump stations I was talking about shortly ago on the east side of the Hudson River. We also did conservation measures. Over the past 30 years, we've reduced that, now 40 years. There's been about a 50% reduction, about a 30% reduction in the amount of water used in New York City. Went from about 1.5 billion gallons a day when the population was under 8 million people. Now the population is just under 9 million. And for, some days were under 1 billion gallons. Dramatic conservation measures that we put in place. We had to put in a water supply management plan, which is how to operate the system for this eight-month period. That has been in the plan for 20 years. It's also the subject of a 429-page environmental impact statement, just the operations of the system itself during the shutdown. Community water supplies had to be insured again. And I think we've covered those items already. And these capital projects all had to get done before we could do the shutdown, including $200 million retrofit of the Catskill Aqueduct to remove biofilm, replace a bunch of valves, and grab some sections and repair parts of the tunnel, the upper portion of the Catskill. We had to put siphons into the Rondau Reservoir because there's no way to release once we do a shutdown at that, at the entry to the actual Delaware Aqueduct. Shave, troll line stabilization down to Kansiko Reservoir. A litany of large construction projects had to get done to enable the eight-month shutdown. And this part is, it leads back to what I mentioned a few moments ago.
Yeah, let me take it from you. So, um, so the plan has been, how should I put this? We've been working on this for more than 30 years. We came up with a plan to do the bypass tunnel and go in and route in Warson in about 2010. It was announced by Cass Holloway, the Commissioner, with the goal of being able to do this work and do the shutdown in 2022. But the contract was set up to allow three years to be able to do this. It was a three-year period. The first period was in 2022, 2023, and 2024. We've gotten everything in place, which John described, operationally to support this, this work. The water system's in place, the infrastructure's there. As part of the contract and part of our planning was we wanted to test all our de-watering systems at Shaft 6, which is in Dutchess County, ahead of, ahead of the shutdown. And the way the tunnel, the way the tunnel's built, it actually sags underneath the Hudson River. The low point on the, on the tunnel is right under the Hudson, on the east shore of the Hudson in Dutchess County. That's where our de-watering equipment is. If you shut the tunnel off, it will unwater some of the shafts up to elevation 503. The elevation of Rondau's 840 feet. In the time period from the 90s up until 2011, we did a number of tests to try to understand what the outflow was out of the tunnel so we could understand when we shut down how much water would flow into the tunnel. So we had a lot of information about that. And we estimated we would get, you know, on the water magnitude, 14 MGD of inflow based on our calculations. And those calculations were all based on tests where we lowered the tunnel to elevation 68 feet above sea level. So the tunnel goes under the Hudson River, 68 feet. And by those changes in flow, in the outflow during that period, you can reverse calculate how much you'd expect to go in, in flow. In March, we shut down. And for the first time since 1958, when we had people in the tunnel, we lowered the tunnel elevation, the pressure in the tunnel to below ground, ground level, below sea level, below the elevation of the Hudson River. We pumped down the tunnel to minus 90 feet. So Hudson River, zero, 90 feet below. And what we found, then we let the tunnel sit and see how much water, now we're actually below the hydraulic grade line, how much water actually came into the tunnel. And what we found, it was more water than we had planned for, more water than we had for a contingency on there. And it was greater than what the initial planning was for the de-watering of the tunnel. So we got that information. And we looked and said, you know, with our engineers we've got around, can we manage this? And can we get a system in place to pump that water down? And the answer from the engineers is, yep, we should be able to do this. It's increasing the pumping, increasing the pumping rate. We have pumps in storage. We have our primary pumps that we have on site. But during the 1990s, when we had this leak, when this leak was discovered, we procured tunnel, tunnel fixing machines, ducts, pieces of steel, pumps. And we placed that in a warehouse in Newburgh. And that equipment's been maintained the entire time for a contingency should something happen with the tunnel. So the idea was we could tap into some of the pumps that we had there, increase our pumping capacity. We could manage this and support a shutdown in October. As we began working more closely, diving into this with both the consultant and the contractor, what we found was we're not going to be able to get everything in place by this, by this October. And we could do it, we could get it, we could do it. But the problem would be with the system and the drainage system, the design of the pumps, is the water level in the tunnel, when the workers initially go in there, would be three, would be 2.8 feet, almost three feet high. And that would be water, and that's inflow that's coming all the way down from different lakes around Warson, around the Hudson. And that would be a challenge, a safety challenge to the, to the work area and the workers. And it was clear, whatever we do, we want to make sure the workers are in there, are safe, and we don't put them at unnecessary work, at any unnecessary risk. So that's when, I mean, this information, we got this just, I mean, literally now, within the last, last several days, and this information is going out this afternoon to the, to the public on, on our website. You know, we made the decision that we'll put off the shutdown until October of next year. And it was possible to get the equipment there during the winter perhaps of this year, but we really need that entire period from October to April to do the work because it's the low-demand period in the city. And, you know, how does this impact Delaware County? Well, during the shutdown, our plan is, I mean, we're not going to take diverting water from Canonsville or Patton. So we're going to be lowering, we were planning lowering those reservoirs. We had operations in place to release water downstream. So with this new information, we're going back to our normal, our normal operations. And the plan is to do the work in October of next year. What we're also going to do is we're going to lower, we're going to do another de-watering test, likely this fall, to go down a little bit lower in elevation to test again, to see if another data point, you know, to make, to verify what our plan is now and we're building the right capacity in. And we would do that this fall. So that's the new information. And I, you know, we spoke to the Commissioner about this. We have this meeting scheduled with Delaware County. And we wanted to get this information out directly to the elected. out directly to the elected officials here. And this also gave me an opportunity. John's been out doing these all over the valley. I've never gone to one of them before and I said, if we're going to Delaware County, you know, John, John worked for the state and out of Ulster County for Ulster County, and he's done a lot of work in that area and worked in Delaware Hillview. I just wanted to be up here in Delaware County to make sure, I mean, make sure our delivery goes well here. So that, that's the bottom line. And John, there's a couple more slides if you want to go through those, if you want to move on to something else, we can move on to something else also. I beg your discretion, Adam Chairman.
Pretty much reiterates what you said, because they're just some of the data points.
Yeah, so this is, this is really interesting. So the blue line, when the tunnel was being refilled, so this is time and, make sure time's on the bottom.
Yep.
And this is tunnel surface. So this is time going along the right and this is the elevation of water, the pressure in the water, elevation of the water in the tunnel. What we expected when it was going to refill, it was going to go along that blue line and what actually happened was that red line. That means water was going into the tunnel faster at a higher rate than we expected. Want to go up and see if there's another slide in there? Yeah, so the solution decreases pumping capacity. So we were planning originally twenty to twenty-five M G D. Right now, we're looking to handle thirty-five to forty-five M G D. And we also have to increase, so there are planned to be three drainage holes in the original, in the original tunnel. And this drainage tunnel will be drilled right up to underneath the original Delaware Aqueduct. And then from the bottom, we drill three drainage, drainage pipes or holes for pipes. We're going to need to increase the diameter of those pipes as well and get new steel. It's going to have to be fab to do that. Next slide? So, and this is the, the work schedule to get it done and it's not always away. I don't have my glasses on. I mean, this essentially puts the drainage shell, having all that, all the materials available to do this work back into June of twenty twenty-four. And supply challenges, I mean, getting the control systems for the pumps, I mean, that's taking a long time, getting new pumps manufactured, new steel, I mean, that's really pushed, pushed it back. So is there another slide?
Okay, that's, goes back to.
So I'll sit down. When it's time for John to get done, just.
We're, we're pretty close to the end, but that's, that's all brand-new information. This is the first presentation we made of that part of this presentation. And everything I've been telling you will be active next year. We are going to be doing presentations throughout probably the rest of, throughout all of next summer again, as we've been doing this year. Probably multiple presentations of some of the same groups just during the change in climate of the seasons. But again, I mentioned the, the operations of the reservoirs during that eight-month shutdown period was subject to a four-hundred-and-twenty-nine-page P I S. Conservation savings we talked about, blue line showing the consumption of water over a period back to the sixties, green line being population down the city. And importantly, with the actual operations of the reservoirs, the systems up here, there's essentially three items that are at the forefront. One of them is making sure that we have enough water to meet the demand. At the same time, we've got to continue making sure that it's of the highest quality possible. And we usually do that with essentially fixing the various reservoirs and different systems. Also, we have to mitigate any risks to the water quality supply, clearly in construction safety. So again, once the Delaware system is shut down, Casco system will be six-hundred-million gallons a day of supply for the city. This will be just the average supply. Progen pump stations, those two new upgraded pump stations, pumping into the bottom of the Delaware Aqueduct, two-hundred-and-forty-million gallons, and the Progen system is self-through the filtration pipe down there up to two-hundred-million-gallon a day. Here's the timeline of the, this is essentially where the red line is. We've been moving toward that this year. Prior to this information, this is essentially the pre-shutdown operations where mainly in the Progen system, we've changed the release rates into some of the downstream tributaries. Also up here, anecdotal, I'm sure many of you heard, myself, Jen Bergliano, we were briefing the Friends of the Upper Delaware Council, R W C, sorry, V R B C, a few other groups, tailwaters, talking about how we do intend to try to bring the three reservoirs in the western end down thirty percent from the capacity. To do that, we anticipate, this is back in April, March and April, that releases would be higher than normal. So probably a really good cold water fishing year, east branch, west branch, and never sink. Frankly, I know a lot of tribal and other groups were calling, asking about specific release rates, which we don't, we don't have a crystal ball because precipitation drives that. And a lot of people made plans to come from Ohio and Jersey, we're not the best fishing ever. And what happened, it turned out to be a dry year. May was horribly dry and just the regulated F F N P, uh, release rates plus a diversion down to the city from the Delaware's wood brought us to that target without the excess releases. There's still been some releases and the increase we did, I think, June first under F F N P in Cannonsville, did get the flow there somehow, but it didn't turn out to be the extraordinary and releases that a lot of people expected. So it's a twelve-month water supply management period, starting in June, that's our water supply year or water season. June first to May thirty-first of next year. Red line, October first was the shutdown period. That would be the different phases of the connections to the tunnel flow. And then obviously at the end, we have to rebalance the system, bringing the Delaware back online. Leading up to the shutdown, we would be drawing down the Delaware as I just explained. We would be preserving water as we have been already, preparing for this year. I would do the same in twenty-four, but we'd be preserving the Casco and the Progen water One of the key points of this section with the graphics was to essentially show the creation community, downstream communities, people who've been concerned about the levels of the reservoir. We've actually modeled the reservoirs throughout the entire shutdown operations. The yellow line is a average year over sixty-three-year period, that's an average mean, without a shutting down. The blue line, the green line, you don't have to, essentially that's more approachable. The blue line is the shutdown period, what would happen just under the modeling, under the averages, what would happen to the surface level of the reservoirs. Frankly, the Delaware system with the size of the reservoirs you have, will see surely not that much. Progen system has very, much more dramatic changes in the elevation of the surface level. So the three tunnels from Pepatton, Never Sink, Cannonsville to the Rondau, they would be shut during the, during the shutdown, so would the chamber that actually enters to the Delaware at the bottom of the Rondau reservoir. And again, there's no ability to release from the Rondau. Once we shut down the Delaware Aqueduct, that's why we got to add the syphons back and drain down to the Rondau creek below and Hudson River. So here, this would be the modeling, or this was the modeling that we have for this year. Not too much of a deviation, yellow line being an average year without a shutdown, blue line being the shutdown. Pepatton is our largest reservoir, a hundred and forty-billion gallons. DeChocan is, I think, more kind of the flagship over in Ulster. This is significantly deeper. DeChocan has a larger surface area, however. Never Sink similarly, but you can see, once we do the shutdown, we draw down further, the dash line being shut down, Never Sink we would draw down more quickly as we have been doing. And once you shut off the tunnel going to the Rondau, the fill-up would be somewhat quicker. Important to remember, and I think one item that I didn't always get out, we didn't always get out clearly, is that our, our release works from these reservoirs, especially Cannonsville, are, they're not only more massive than our diversions to the city. So cutting off the diversions of the city, which is the pipe that actually goes and brings drinking water down, doesn't shut off, it's not like shutting a drain to a tunnel, you can't get the water out. Releases are about two and a half times more. Can actually remove water at a rate of about two and a half times more than the diversions from those three reservoirs. So the Rondau reservoir, which is just over by Ulster County, and then the Cannonsville similarly, just a little bit below the average of the sixty-three-year mean. Recreational uses in the Delaware system, they will change elsewhere, but the Delaware system, there's not going to be any impact to recreational uses, fishing will continue in the reservoirs and in the non-terminal reservoirs, the Rondau, Pepatton, Never Sink, Cannonsville, recreational boating will still be allowed as well as hunting and shore fishing as well. So summary, Rondau to West Branch Tunnel, that forty-four mile segment, this has been in plans for more than twenty years. Multiple required projects that we had to get in place before we even considered a shutdown. This, this climate management, the eight-month shutdown, based on extensive computer modeling that we're still working on and will be working on throughout the shutdown. And it's also highly regulated by state and federal regulators and we will continue reviewing multiple data points of working with partners throughout the entire project. So I am open to any questions from the esteemed body and would love to be able to do any parts that you think could add in to it?
Thank you, thank you, John. So we gave an extensive presentation, took some time. Thank you for your patience in getting through here.
Fair question, a couple real quick ones. You said that you pumped it down to ninety feet, the invert of that tunnel?
Minus ninety.
Minus ninety, right, that's minus ninety. So the invert of that tunnel is seven hundred feet? Is that right?
It's about six ninety-four.
So you went down, you know, you went down fifteen percent or something like that. As you go down a lot more increased capacity. And I'm asking this, you did dye testing in there?
We did.
Did you get any dye in the Hudson?
We haven't done dye testing in a, in a long time. When we did do dye testing, there are, there are surface expressions on the shore of the, of the Hudson where it'll actually pop up in moat high, you could see those.
So my, my concern with this is the reason I bring this up, and I know your engineers are far, have a much larger intellect than I ever could. But the fact of the matter is if you've got questionable limestone underneath there, you're seven hundred feet deep, this is happening underneath the Hudson. And we know the Hudson is one of the most polluted rivers there is in the world for G E dumping into it back, which is why we have the watershed in the first place and we've never really dredged it, cleaned it out. If you have that outflow and it comes to the Hudson, when you drain this thing down for six, eight months, isn't there the possibility that some of that inflow could make its way back down into the tunnel? Do you have?
There's, there's a lot in the preamble to that question.
Okay, I know. I'm asking one and I should have a.
I don't know if everyone would simulate the preamble, but I mean, the question is, you know, when we drain it down, you're getting leakage into the tunnel. That leakage is being, is going to be treated, pumped.
As bypass.
It's bypass, it's pumped back in on Shaft Six. It goes to a treatment system, goes back to the Hudson.
Gotcha.
So that's not.
So it's a total bypass system that you're going around that whole section, that worst section going around. You've set this up to where you really don't have to mess with that.
That's right.
All right. Does that old section include mercury gates?
I mean, now you're going back.
I'm sorry, but I mean, I had to because I just didn't know how the hell you could get in there and work on it if you did.
That section does not. I mean, we had the other issues with oil further down, those, no, it does not have any of those, any of those.
I was trying to figure out how you even got in there. How did you get in there if you had those, you know, we had these other, you couldn't even get in the Aqueduct where the mercury gates were, right?
Yeah, I mean, that was largely related to the historical use of mercury manometers at the different facilities. We had other side, we had other places.
Technology, thank God, then we can move beyond that.
And we've done a lot, I mean, we've done a lot, I mean, a huge amount since.
Since then.
Since two thousand.
All right, so now this is going to be the ugly one where you're not going to answer this, but I'm going to do it anyways because I got you here in the room.
Oh, no.
I have the opportunity to do it, all right? In the future, since we are doing this and we're going to remove all this million, tens, thirty-million gallons per day, is there going to be an opportunity in the future where the watershed towns will be able to work with D E P, the other five state stakeholders, to maybe bring these water levels down in some kind of meaningful way when we're having really serious flood event or heavy rain years we're looking at? You know, we've had situations pass and I understand with this project, you can't pump this down until you get ready. Well, after this project is done, a couple of years from now, and you no longer have this leaking situation happening, and you have a nice tight pressurized system here and you're a couple of years beyond it, so you can actually see what real flows are. You have real data, we're not asking you to do something you don't know about. But three years down the road, you're going to know what's going on here in real time. At that time, we'll be, we'll be able to sit down with you with a partner, as partners, in a, in a real meaningful, successful relationship and say, hey, guys, it's kind of getting tough destroying twenty-six of our houses and our villages and towns every time we get a high water vent. Maybe we could work on bringing this down a little because maybe you don't need that really high capacity, you don't have those leaks anymore. Is there an opportunity for that conversation to happen, Paul?
There's all these opportunities for conversations to happen. Again, there's a lot packed into the front, front end of the conversation. I mean, the relief, I mean, the question you're asking about reservoir levels and our use of the C S O and how we manage that, I mean, we're looking at ways to improve our management of that to make sure we live up to our commitment to be a partner and try to keep the reservoir levels below that. And, you know, independent of this project, or sort of in conjunction with the project, you saw a couple of charts that John put up there from the Weather Service Coordination. We've also entered into agreements with Fonda University for their climate, long-term climate forecast. They do a little, they do similar to the Weather Service, a little different. We've also been working with weather, the Weather Cooperation owned by I B M, the Weather Channel, to get another source of information, get better data for that long-term forecast. And just recently, in working with the Corps of Engineers, they, they have an operation where they start doing forecast-informed reservoir operations, mainly out west. We've been looking at that and trying to work to bring those to the east to help with their management of reservoirs in Pennsylvania that affect the Delaware, which we think there's opportunities to use water there as opposed to water in the reservoirs. But we've also engaged independently with them, it's the Center for Western Water Extremes. We've got discussions with them about bringing that forecast skill and improving the skill of the forecast here in the east so we can better manage our reservoirs. And in this timeframe, they're looking at, it's like seven to ten to twelve days, the primary beneficiary for us on that is us meeting our commitments to be good neighbors. And if we see a storm based on better forecast data and they, and the work they've done in the west is pretty impressive, how they've improved the accuracy of the forecast, we can better make releases or diversion decisions so we can live up to being good partners and be not only the city benefiting, but also provide benefits downstream.
And also meet your obligation to the city stakeholders.
Exactly. But I think that conversation, you know, willing to have that.
It's an important one that we're going to have to have, man.
Because there's a lot in the preamble of that part.
I understand that, you'll get through this, we'll still be here. That's all I have, thank you.
If you have, if this area hasn't drained drought next year, one, it'll help you on your drought down, but what if the city is under water restrictions at the time when you need to draw it down? What are you going to go for?
I mean, that, that's a good question. Last year, I mean, we were in drought, I mean, the state was in a drought, drought conditions. It was really dry. We made the decision not to do the shutdown, but based on that information at that time, we probably would not have gone into that shutdown anyway because of the drought conditions. The, you know, the guidance in talking with our commissioner, understanding the issue, is he's looking at ways, even if it's dry, I mean, we're not going to put the system at risk, it is necessary to put restrictions in this, look at water use and water use reductions in city or elsewhere as part of the conversation. He's willing to look into doing that to make sure we have the best chance of completing this project and going forward, even under drought conditions.
It's the last man in the decision, basically.
What's that?
It'll be a last man in the decision at that point in time.
Well, I mean, so it's, so we were looking at October first. So contract, contractually, you know, the contractor, we need to tell the contractor in advance, a couple of months in advance, say we're doing this. But at any time up until October first, we can say, you know, it's not going. Also, the way the project's been designed, if during the project, we say, you know, we can't, we need to get the system started, started again, the project's designed that the longest time it would take, if we had to bail out and restart the tunnel, either the existing one or put the bypass, depending on where we are, into, into surface rapidly is sixty days. So we can always pull out and that's right, that's in the contractor, in, in the contract and that's an important provision, provision we have. Because, you know, the number, the number of unknowns in the world is unknown, right? It's infinite. So we have that contingency.
And it's October's the beginning date regardless, because winter is coming, we want everything to be frozen, we don't have all that storm. want everything to be frozen, we don't have all that storm on, all that.
Lowest demand period.
Lowest demand, and then that preamble references Game of Thrones.
Hey, winter's come. On that note, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
I represent the town of Hancock. I know you're very familiar with food, art, and comedy.
Absolutely.
Are you going to, so this has been cut off for another year.
That's right.
Are you going to let them know about that, or can you give them?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely, I mean, we're getting some information, getting a word out about what we can just discuss.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have an update on the website, we'll also do Facebook postings that goes up.
Emails, I'm sorry.
Pardon me?
Emails, yeah?
We will be emailing supervisors, stakeholders.
I heard John and I are through.
I believe, yeah.
Oh, did you? All right, thank you.
Hey, Paul, I've got one question. A couple of times you mentioned that you drained the tunnel down and found there was more inflow.
Inflow, inflow.
Was the inflow flow totally weak from supply, or was there any infiltration there?
So it's, we can't characterize, it was groundwater, water entering into the tunnel. And what we haven't seen in the tunnel, there hasn't been an increase, a big increase in the leaking rate. So that hasn't happened. So this is just inflow that's coming in from above, which may be because we've been leaking so long, there've been better paths or better flow paths, or flow paths have changed to allow it to get in, but we don't think there's been any major change inside, inside of the tunnel.
Another thing, you're disagreeing.
I know, I mean.
Nice, that's a nice way to end it.
At least you're not hitting Paul.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul, I'll get the rest of it. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you, Paul.
Next, I would like to introduce Jessica Beckioli.
Shelley, I, I'm just talking about the IRT mission. We've done a lot of outreach, it looks like the outreach is, is really covering the county. Our signups for spay and neuter are already, they were filled a week ago, and now we're filling up a waiting list, we're starting radio ads, we will be doing newspaper, we have distributed materials all over the county, and I mean, that is such a headache, I got to tell you. This is one big county, but, but I think that we've gotten good saturation, oh, a few newspaper ads will be coming out, and during the event, we're going to be doing a lot of communicating at the event, Facebook Live with, you know, to tell people, oh, there's lines in the optometry area right now, so, you know, maybe wait an hour to come or whatever. And I just wanted to update everyone on, on the fact that we have been focused on the communication, and I think we have reached a lot of people. I have materials, which I'll come around after the meeting and just see who wants to have some, some more materials for distribution in, in your county. And if there's anything you need, you can just reach out to me and, and.
Jess, do you or Shelley know are there more volunteers needed?
I think there are a few volunteer slots left, although a couple of large companies stepped up. So the rehabilitation home in Oneonta actually has seven people that volunteered, and Melon Prat has made it sort of a mission to fill up those volunteer spots. So Shelley Martin did say there are a few slots left, but I think we're covered if we don't fill that.
That's great, because that was a week ago, there was a ton of positions in there.
There were, I talked to Shelley earlier, and she said that there are definitely still some openings, but not critical openings that we couldn't cover at right wing. So we can still cover it, but if you know people want to volunteer, we're still taking them.
And the radio ad, there is one radio ad that specifically targets, you know, we need volunteers, so that's going to be going out. And I believe there's going to be mentioned in, in the, in the print ads, in the newspaper print. And also, as you know, we've done signage in Spanish and outreach in Spanish as well to, to cover all populations. So if anybody has any questions or needs any materials, reach out to me and I will get them to you.
Great, any questions, sir Jess?
Thank you.
Okay, one last privilege of the floor, Jerry Vernal.
Hi, I'd like to, first of all, I'd like to address this resolution that Democratic Republican Committee circulated that they would like us to pass. And it just, I said earlier, maybe I'm naive, but I, I would think that when anything like this is circulated with all the facts that may true, it's not just rumors and stuff. And one of the things that really bothered me is, I'm going to ask Cindy Argiros, she's the publisher and owner of the Hancock Herald, to explain one section in there that was too big to follow.
Jeff. Thanks, thank you, Jerry, for asking me to speak and Chairman Malley for letting me do this. Just a real quick introduction of who I am. My name is Cindy Ray Argiros, I'm the publisher and editor of the Hancock Herald. I took it over about two and a half years ago. Yes, it was a COVID decision, total change of, of, of job field for me, but I'm loving it, it's been absolutely great. So it's a change of occupation decision, but I've lived in Hancock, the town of Hancock, most of my life. My husband and I own several small businesses in the town and village of Hancock, we raised our six children there. I tell people this all the time, I'm passionate, absolutely passionate about rural life and rural communities. And to be the, the kind of the keeper of the news in the community, I feel like these small newspapers and radio stations that we have here in this county, that we're very fortunate to have them, because in so many places in the country, there are news deserts, and Delaware County is not one of them. We have the Mountain Eagle, we have the Reporter, we've got the Hancock Herald, we have radio stations, it's, we're really very fortunate for that. With that said, let me see, we're in a, okay. And I take that responsibility very seriously as well, okay? To be that, it's why I began to attend and actually uncover these meetings when I took over the paper, because I believe my predecessor didn't. I don't think the Hancock Herald covered or came or was in attendance at these meetings. But I feel like my readers really need to know what our elected officials are doing and saying. That's our job as journalists, just keep an eye on you guys. So, and I do take that very seriously. And then in March of 2022, this board designated the Hancock Herald as the official paper of record for the county, along with the Mountain Eagle. At which point, once that happened, I immediately, which I didn't, I didn't even know that you would do that, or it wasn't something that I sought out or looked for or asked for in any way, shape, or form, but once that responsibility was given to me, I immediately began placing the Hancock Herald on newsstands in Walton, Hamden, and Delhi. I made a concerted effort to improve and update the website. And this is what brings me to, I want to make this very, very clear, because in the article which appeared in the New York Times and the Walton Reporter, oops, I did it, I grew up here, sorry, I know I'm not supposed to. And in the Reporter, and in this resolution by the Democratic Party, I want to be very clear, the legal and classified section of the Hancock Herald is accessible to subscribers and non-subscribers on the website, okay? For full disclosure and transparency, I want to make a note that the only things that are, the archives are not available to non-subscribers of those legals and classified ads. However, if that is something that the county requires, or once that, that's, it's a flip of a switch, I can make that happen and make the archives also available to non-subscribers. Okay? So just a couple other real quick details, I know we've been here a long time. In the two and a half years that I've, since I've taken over, I increased the circulation of the Hancock Herald fifteen percent, okay? So that's one, one figure. We are definitely, our circulation is smaller than the Reporter and smaller than the Mountain Eagle, we cover and encompass predominantly the Hancock area, but also areas in northern Wayne County, Pennsylvania, because we do straddle the, the border there, but as well as Downsville, East Branch, and some, and like I said, county business at this level in, in Delhi. And I also recently made the decision to hire a contract reporter to help cover the committee meetings, because there's, I just can't beat two places at one time. If anybody's figured out how to do that, please let me know, because I just can't do that. And then just additionally, here's another fact, so in those articles and in the resolution, I don't know actually if it's in the resolution, but it was in the articles, the reporter indicated that the, they have lost thirteen thousand dollars worth of revenue by losing that designation to publish the legals for the county. So, whoop, that's a lot of money. And I went through my financial records, so I've been doing this since March, the annual increase in revenue to the Herald has been just shy of six thousand dollars. So obviously, that says to me, my advertising rates are much cheaper, less, which is important for the taxpayers to know as well, and for you all to know that and be aware of that. And if you have any questions, oh, and just also with that increased revenue, I think this is important too, two more facts. I was able to hire another part-time person to help with that distribution of the paper. I'm going to have some other ideas of how to continue to increase that and increase that on newsstands throughout the county. And, there's one more thing, but it doesn't matter, that, that's the most important thing. So I just really wanted to clarify those issues, and if anybody has any questions whatsoever, please let me know.
Cindy, one thing I think is important for the board, I believe, they are a new percent. You're collaborating with the Mountain Eagle?
Yes.
So that if you have a subscription with our other official county paper, you also can get the Hancock Herald.
Yes, that is, and vice versa. So if you are a subscriber to the Mountain Eagle, and you choose to be a subscriber to the Hancock Herald, you can have that for free and vice versa, and that's been very, very successful. And the two of us, I've met with Matt, the owner of the, the Mountain Eagle, multiple times, and we're really very, very much collaborative, as far as that kind of coverage, because it is such a large county. I mean, I just, he can't get down in Hancock, I can't get up, it rocks great, but that's not going to happen.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'd like to make a comment regarding this resolution. I think it's important, not just because I'm a Democrat, I wouldn't care if I was a Republican making this request, or even a non-Metis member of our community. I think through full transparency of this board, we should allow it to go through the process. It's right for us to do that, and have it go through the Eagle and have the resolution come for the board.
But it will go through the process, through legislative, then forward.
Legislative committee, go through the proper process, because we need this full transparency on this. I'm afraid it certainly doesn't look like that if we don't do that.
Yes, it will go through the process. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, are there any standing committee reports before we move on to resolutions? Okay, we will move on to resolutions. First resolution is number one oh five.
I bring this resolution up and we'll put it to adoption.
Two thousand twenty-three budget amendment, transfer of funds to Department of Public Health Services. Questions? Please call the role. Gladstone?
Yes.
Mole? Yes. Merrill?
Yes.
Calente?
Yes.
Tuckoff?
Yes.
Axto?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Triscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Settle.
Resolution number one oh seven?
I bring this resolution up and we'll put it to adoption.
Two thousand twenty-three budget amendment, transfer of funds to public health services. Questions on this? Please call the role. Gladstone?
Yes.
Mole?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Calente?
Yes.
Tuckoff?
Yes.
Axto?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Triscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Settle. Resolution number one oh eight? Two thousand twenty-three budget amendment, summer youth employment program, Department of Social Services. Please call the role. Gladstone?
Yes.
Mole?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Calente?
Yes.
Tuckoff?
Yes.
Axto?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Triscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Settle. Resolution number one oh nine? Two thousand twenty-three budget amendment, homeless shelter, capital project budget, Department of Social Services. Questions? Please call the role. Gladstone?
Yes.
Mole?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Calente?
Yes.
Tuckoff?
Yes.
Axto?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Triscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Settle. Resolution number one ten? Two thousand twenty-three budget amendment, homeless shelter, capital project budget, Department of Social Services.
This is an adjustment for the insurance, plus the insurance is what we're going to get. The bid was received in at one, about one point four million, and we're lining about two hundred and fifty thousand in there for taking apart and lock stones, sidewalks, fire suppression system, security cameras, furniture appliances, and anything else that may come along. So we need another half million dollars. We've got it in personal services line, of course, we've got vacancies that are not filled, so like the other department.
Any questions?
Has there been any consideration at all we've been in it to get those bids?
I think we're going to have to, because it's going to void the bill for issues there, not issue, but processing that we have to go through, and it's going to be past the time period for the issue in the contract.
And this, this homeless shelter total project cost is going to be one point seven million dollars?
Is there other options?
We gotta, we gotta discuss other options, I can't, just.
It's just over two thousand square feet, sorry.
Two thousand square feet.
It's two thousand square feet.
Oh, yeah, it's two thousand, twenty-one hundred square feet, eight bedrooms. Did you, I just, I just know the average, the average construction cost for municipal projects is.
Oh, you can't, you can't, I mean, this.
Just a rule of thumb, it's four hundred dollars a square foot.
Yeah.
We, for one point seven billion, we could build the Taj Mahal with forty rooms or whatever, this is, I believe.
It's two thousand square feet.
Oh yeah, it's two thousand twenty-one hundred square feet. Eight bedrooms. I just know the average construction cost for municipal projects is... Just a rule of thumb is four hundred dollars a square foot.
Yeah.
For one point seven billion, we could build the Taj Mahal with forty rooms or whatever. This is, I believe, I don't...
That's why it probably will be rebid, because construction season will be... We'll be out of construction season by the time hopefully things get approved. And if they do get approved, then we'll have rebid for the spring season.
Why is this resolution on the floor then?
If we want to...
In case things speed through.
We want faith. Another half million out of reserve or out of... Unspent ones and for that moving people.
I...
Of course, what isn't spent, we go back to the general.
This is about eight hundred dollars a square foot. How much did the administration bill the cost of square foot?
It's under four hundred thousand, or four hundred dollars a square foot, from what I recall. Three hundred and fifty for, you're talking about the DPW? I'm pretty sure it was right around the four hundred dollar per square foot. Now, to the average taxpayer, they don't care. It's just, whether it's an apple or an orange, eight hundred and fifty dollars a square foot versus four hundred dollars a square foot is... I just, yeah.
It also had to be bid in for separate contracts.
So did the, so did the... Yeah, obvious projects over a certain threshold have to. I just, I think we need to rethink this whole thing.
Where are you gonna put the homeless? Have you got any idea?
I don't know, but I wanna... I wish I had an answer, I really do.
If I had the answer, we'd be the committee that spent hours and hours and hours.
What did you spend hours?
What was that?
How many homes? How many lives are housed?
Ten. There's eight bedrooms, little houses up to ten.
Okay, let's call the roll, please. Gladstone?
No.
Malley?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
No.
Tuckell?
No.
Axto?
No.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Driscoll?
No.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott? Yes. Ellis?
No.
Davis?
No.
Wilson? Posher?
No.
Leighton?
No.
Sada?
No.
Okay, it did not pass. Move on to resolution number 111.
I'll bring that up.
2023 Budget Amendment Acceptance of New York State Entire State Development Fund in Department of Economic Development.
This is the grant that Economic Development put in for. They're gonna make it interact with the New York State Economic Development money, and they put in for the money, and this is all from a grant.
Any other questions? Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Malley?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuckell?
Yes.
Axto?
Yes.
Taggart?
No.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Driscoll? Haynes?
Yes.
Scott? Ellis? Davis?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Posher?
Yes.
Leighton?
Yes.
Sada?
Resolution number 112.
I bring this up and move it to adoption.
2023 Budget Amendment Acceptance of SNAP and Funding Office for the Acre. Questions? Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Malley?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuckell?
Yes.
Axto?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Posher?
Yes.
Leighton?
Yes.
Resolution number 113.
2023 Budget Amendment Summer Youth Employment Program, Delaware County Youth Herald. Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Malley?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente? Tuckell?
Yes.
Axto?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Posher?
Yes.
Resolution number 114.
Bring this up and move it to adoption.
Second.
2023 Budget Amendment Transfer of Funds, Department of Public Works. Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Malley?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuckell?
Yes.
Axto?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Posher?
Yes.
Leighton?
Yes.
Resolution number 115.
I bring this up and move it to adoption.
Second.
Acquiescence Tax Disbursement Approved, Department of Economic Development.
Yes. This accuracy tax affects the towns more than anybody else. Towns gives the money and disperses it where it wants to. And it don't matter if it's to the towns. We're the ones that have to pay any corrections, oversights, inspections, all that. And we keep giving this, I mean, I think something should be either disbursing some of the money to the towns on a half a basis, or a lot basis, or something. There's no reason that a town should hit the total funds and not reinvest in the township's cost.
Glenn?
So the money doesn't, I mean, the money rests with the county, but the county is using all the funding that's raised to reinvest in the tourism industry to try to attract...
Well, I see some of your investments are in short-term rentals and stuff, improvements and stuff, which, you know, eight, ten thousand dollar projects. Which I'm not saying the money's not being reinvested. What I'm saying is, there's no recourse for towns to, if you've got a problem with a short-term rental, or this or that, you bear the expense of fixing that situation. The county bears no expense and gets all the benefit. That's my point, and I think it should be shared to some extent. Because towns are being inundated by extra inspections, extra complaints, extra this, extra that, and it's gonna become a bigger and bigger problem. It's not gonna get blown away. And I think, you know, I mentioned one aspect that was brought up through one of my discussions. And, you know, if the town gets into litigation over one, the county doesn't give a shit. It's town expense, right? And town gets nothing for it.
But that's only one aspect of the recipients. There are many recipients here.
There's only, what was it, fourteen or eighteen?
It's to promote festivals and events in each of our towns.
Yeah, and one of the categories that was available in this round, so this round of funding, so there's two rounds of funding. One was for supporting events and things of that nature put on by municipalities and nonprofits. They're the eligible applicants. This one, there is funding available to help short-term rentals come into code compliance. That was one of the aspects that the Tourism Advisory Board felt was important to try to make it easier to address some of these issues, that there is funding to help these short-term rentals come into compliance.
Yeah, the point of that is, most of the short-term rentals are not residents, they're investors. As picking our short, our long-term rentals, our long homeowners cannot of course compete with out-of-county money. You know, and if you're trying to put some short-term rentals into compliance, then what about the ones that are already in business? You're not helping the towns to recover some of their money for their code enforcement officer, fire permits. What if, you know, if their access isn't there? You know, emergency services. All this money has been spent to bring them in, feed them some more, fix them when they're already got. Enough money invested, because they do the short terms because they're not making money yet. Oh, no, that's because they are making money yet. But I hate to see it just dropped and feed... This is Delaware County tax money. I'd like to see some help back to the towns, which I guess is a brick wall in the running. Thank you very much.
I actually got one for you, Glenn. Two things. On the first page there, you got New York City Footy, and it says, pay for referees in U-Haul rent for the soccer tournament. Nope, doesn't really fit the criteria.
Well, so that's what they're planning on using the specific money for. But Footy Fest is a soccer festival that comes on every year around at Columbus Day weekend. They bring in five to six hundred people, very few of them local, that are part of this New York's Footy Fest club down in New York City. They bring them all up for a weekend to have a weekend of soccer and fun in the Catskills.
But the event, so you feel like the event does meet the criteria?
This individual one doesn't? Yes.
Okay, well, okay. Second one I have, and I just going through, I guess the thing I noticed on here is probably what Jeff did, is these short-term rentals and all of these additions. An addition of a funk room off the main living area, complete renovation and remodel of home interior and exterior. So if I decide to advertise next month, my place is an Airbnb, you guys, I can apply for a grant?
They have to be in business as a short-term rental for three years.
There we go, that's what I want.
And be registered for...
Registered for three years, so these are registered and then in operation.
Yes, for three years.
All right, thank you.
I sit on this committee, and I have since its inception, mostly because I voted against the bed tax in the first place. That's how I got tapped. But the essence of this program is to spread the wealth around to the businesses and the communities and everybody in the county. And, yeah, maybe, maybe we help an Airbnb make more money. But they're bringing a lot of people in here or spending a lot of money. And you look up and down these small towns, these restaurants and little shops and stuff would not exist without a lot of these people coming in, because the locals cannot support them at the level that they are surviving on. It's a, it's a double-edged sword, it works both ways.
The entire program was set up to encourage terrorism in Delaware County, so...
And it has immensely, yeah. I've been converted. It is a miracle. That in itself is a miracle.
This is a voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Aye.
So carry. Resolution number 116.
I bring this up and move it to adoption.
2023 Budget Amendment Transfer of Funds, Department of Economic Development. Here's our local... Gladstone?
Yes.
Malley?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuckell?
Yes.
Axto?
Yes.
Taggart?
No.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Davis? Posher?
Yes.
Leighton?
Yes.
Sada?
Yes.
Resolution number 117.
Bring this up and move it to adoption. Second.
Change order number three, final, up proposal solid base four twenty-one, Department of Public Works. These are the kind of change orders we like. Any questions on this? Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Merrill? Valente?
Say Malley? Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Malley, yes. Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuckell?
Yes.
Axto?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield? Vernal?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.[1522.75]
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Crozier?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Sada?
Yes.
Resolution number 118.
Second?
Control of snow and ice on county highways by town forces, section one thirty-five A of the highway law, Department of Public Works.
All in, or, uh, voic- or, it's a voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Posed.
So carried. Resolution number 119.
Second?
Control of snow and ice on New York City roads by town forces, Department of Public Works.
Voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Posed.
So carried. Resolution number 120.
Second?
Resolution affecting to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation is correct, New York State Solid Waste Management Plan.
Questions? The voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Posed. So carried. Tyson, your seven-page memo, answer everyone's question. Resolution number 121.
Exception to resolution number two sixty-nine of nineteen ninety, Public Defender's Office.
Voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Posed. So carried. Resolution number 122.
I'll bring resolution number 122 to the floor and move it up.
Change of hours for the Sheriff's Office Civil Division.
The voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Posed. So carried. Resolution number 123.
I'll bring this up and move it up.
Transactions involving treasury securities.
The voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Posed. So carried. Last but not least, resolution number 124.
Let's pull that up and move it up. Second? I would like to ask our outgoing...
Let's vote on this first.
I would like, Charlie, you don't want to introduce?
Yes, but can we vote? But there was a first and a second.
Oh.
All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Posed. So carried.
I'd like to ask Charlie, our individual outgoing director of the veteran service, to introduce Mark to the board and, uh, to interview process after I interview and...
It's my honor to say that we couldn't find anybody to replace me.
Did you say it, Charlie?
No, I want you to know that, uh, through a, a process and it was involved, uh, we were lucky enough to find this young man. Uh, his name is Mark Dunlop. He's a twenty-year-plus veteran, uh, Army veteran. Don't hold that against him. Uh, but he is an individual who is going to do very well. Uh, he has got a lot of experience and he relates to the veterans that we have in Delaware County. He is also a resident from the area, uh, and a farmer. There's a lot of things that are pluses there. So again, here is Mark Dunlop.
Yeah, you want to do the two not pre, three not prefiled resolutions. A wave rule ten without objection. Resolution number 125.
Bring this up and move it up. Second?
Operating the implementation and funding in the first instance, a hundred percent of the federal aid and state municipalities program aid eligible cost of a transportation federal aid project and appropriated funds therefore.
Questions on this? So voice vote. Part, sorry, to move forward.
Gladstone?
Yeah.
Valet?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tyto?
Yes.
Exto?
Yes.
Tiger?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Bernal?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Stah?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Crozier?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Sada?
Yes.
Hey, pay the bills. Resolution number 126.
I bring this up and move it up in a second.
Name of the water? Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yeah.
Valet?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tyto?
Yes.
Exto?
Yes.
Tiger?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Bernal?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Stah?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Crozier?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Sada?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Charlie, don't you believe it's only fitting that we've had the longest meeting today for our entire... Now to get a little payback.
Wait, isn't it, isn't this over?
It's over when she says it's over.
You should have looked at her.
It's a Charlie, Charlie Carson show.
When it comes to Charlie, what can I say? Charlie is that person that makes us all comfortable, often using laughter to put us at ease. Charlie distinguishes himself from others with his wit and sense of humor, but we all know it is his compassion and drive to help others that has made him a tremendous advocate for the veterans here in Delaware County. When Charlie became the Director of Veterans Services, it was clear he not only understood the complicated programs and requirements that only the federal government could come up with, but he knew the veterans. He understood how important it is to guide and empower our local veterans to get the services they have earned and deserved. He has worked tirelessly to bring programs to Delaware County to support our local veterans, but also to make sure our veterans are honored and respected along the way. Through his efforts, he has educated so many of us on the importance of helping our veterans and understanding the uniqueness associated with being part of the brotherhood or sisterhood of our military. That unique bond among those that have been chosen to serve is something only another veteran like Charlie could understand. One thing that always strikes me about Charlie is the way he addresses people and their situations. Charlie is a direct and honest person that doesn't give the typical government answer. Yet he never makes people feel like they are bothering him or that their situation isn't important. He provides information, guidance, and solutions, and most importantly, he is always willing to put the work in while going above and beyond to help. I truly believe it is his direct manner that allows our local heroes to feel like they are being treated with dignity and that their service to our country is appreciated. Charlie has truly touched the lives of so many, and in true Charlie fashion, he has brushed it all off as just a day on the job. You can't talk yet. Charlie, we all know how much you mean to the veterans here, and I hope you know also how much you mean to all of your colleagues as well. You're a true leader, and we have been blessed to be able to work with you throughout your tenure. You will be dearly missed, but we hope you enjoy very well deserved time. Roxanne has something to say. You're going to call her a crybaby. So as I read this speech through Roxanne, Charlie has not been surprised that Roxanne isn't able to, because I, as I just said, he would say, "You're such a crybaby." This is from Roxanne's point. "I interviewed for the position in early 2020 and knew there were several others. They had applied, but figured, what the heck? One day Charlie came over to my office at DPW and said to me, 'I am not the type of person that likes to deliver bad news via phone or email, so I thought I would do it in person.'" My heart sank. I was so hoping that I would be able to get this job. He then continued with, "I am sorry to say that I've decided to hire you and you are stuck working with me." With that being said, the rest is history. Seriously, in my fourteen years working for Delaware County, I have never had such an amazing boss. His dedication to the veterans, his undying love for his family, and understanding and caring attitude towards his coworkers is beyond compare. Charlie was always willing to fight for the veteran if he needed to. Sometimes it was just be easier if the VA had seen it his way from the beginning, but I guess they didn't know who they were dealing with. There was one veteran in particular who had a somewhat complicated claim that Charlie said, and I quote, "I want to see this one get awarded before I retire." Well, unfortunately for me, but fortunately for the veteran, Charlie ended up winning the fight and the veteran was awarded, as they should have been. Charlie's love and pride for his family, well, that's yet another story. Everyone who knows Charlie knows that Nancy is his rock. Their relationship is the kind that the rest of us dream of. I have never met any of Charlie's children, only a few of the grandkids, but I feel as if I know each one personally. He speaks of them often and so fondly. Now on to the personal side of life. Since it is primarily Charlie's fault that I was never going to fall in love again, never letting anyone move into our home with us, and never ever going to get married again, it seems only fitting that Charlie foot the bill for the upcoming wedding in October. By the way, Charlie, by the way, Charlie, it's not a question. Seriously, Charlie has been so good to me and helped me both professionally and personally, and I don't know how I will manage without our daily conversations. I am truly so lucky to have had you as part of my life for the past three years, and I thank you for everything. Although I couldn't read this myself, Charlie would be proud that I came up with more than three sentences. If this was a compensation for me. Respectfully, Roxanne Hennings. So it's obvious how you have an impact in your life, Charlie. So with it, I'd like you to come up here so that I can give you a small token of the board supervisor and the employees of Delaware County.
Did you know about that?
No.
And that's my wife back there.
The really cute one, cute one in red, that's her.
Because you've shared so much humor with us over the years, we want to give you some...
Ah!
And it's been signed by, um, a lot of employees and our board supervisors. So thank you.
Dumber in uniform.
I would like you to share with the, with everyone the story you told me about how you chose to live here in Delaware County the other day.
You got a flat pair of mirrors.
This is, this is really a nice story.
Yeah, okay.
Before you do your jokes.
First of all, thank you. And I will tell how we got here, but I just want to thank everybody. I've worked with all of you in some capacity at different times, Roxanne especially, but the board here has been very supportive. Uh, when situations occur and I reach out to them or you reach out to me, I appreciate that. And I have to tell you, Betty, that in your situation, your predecessor and I are like this. He was an ex-marine and old Spack. He would come in and give me a hard time. We gotta walk away. Going back to what Tina was saying, the, uh, we were in New Mexico, and we wanted to be on the East Coast, so we were in an absolutely raw border. The worst place you could be is New Mexico. I was active duty. My wife and I talked about it and we said, "Okay, we're gonna go take a month off and we're gonna go travel to the eastern area and we're gonna look at land." And we did. We traveled all over. We went to New Hampshire, Maine, Vermont, Massachusetts, Rhode Island, and New York. And we went to all these places looking for parcels of land that we could build our log home on. This is what we did. We tripped through everything we could possibly believe. My wife never got into her head that not to wear shorts when we're in the middle of the weeds. She was all cut up. She was constantly cut up, and she would never understand. She'd say, "How did I get cut up?" Look where we go. We got here to New York and we went and looked at some land, but we weren't sure. We had, at this point in time, we got to, we're used to looking at land. We said, "Well, where do we really want to go? What is it gonna happen to make us decide where we want to go?" And we came to Delhi, and we went to the Delhi diner. And we sat at the Delhi diner and we had our lunch. And I always talked to whoever the locals are or wherever we went, and I asked them, I asked the young lady, she was about seventeen, and I said, you know, "Are you from around here?" She said, "Yeah, I go to school at Delaware Cat." And I asked her, "How do you like it here?" She said, "I love it." She said, "I love this, I love Delhi. I've been here, raised here, the whole bit." And we talked to all these other people, and they kept telling us the same thing. And we, the more we would talk to people, we would say, "This is about where we want to go. This is an indicator that this is Delhi. This is the community we want to be in." So we were quite happy about that. So we said, "Yeah, this is what we're gonna do. We're gonna get something in this area." And we made our choices. Left, went back, all the way back to New Mexico, and lo and behold, the two, the pieces of property we had put money down or told them we wanted, one pulled out, the other one said, "We can't have any heavy equipment on it to do a perk test." And I'm like, "Oh, I'm not, I'm not doing that." All the time, I'm stupid if you do that. So my wife was very upset. She said, "We just spent a month." And, but we told these, the individual realtors, "Hey, you know what we want. Let us know if there's something that comes up." And lo and behold, Ray Pucci sends us an email, this flashing email, and we look at it, and it's this little parcel of land, just under six acres, looks beautiful. I said, "Yeah, we'll take it." We got very nervous about that, but I said, "No, we'll take it." So I don't see, it looks good. Well, we arrived here and we looked at the land, and something apparently told us to be here. Uh, my wife was born and raised in Warren, Rhode Island, and we both went to school, we were in high school. Her maiden name is Burns. The road next to us, at this parcel of land, is Warren Road. My neighbor across the street is named Burns.
Oh, boy.
So we said, "I guess we're supposed to be here." So we did. We built the log home there. Uh, we lived over here on Elm Street while we were building it, and I have to say, we were, we have hit it one hundred percent on the nose. My wife is now retired, uh, as of me, just like me, as of July, and she was a teacher over here at Delaware Cat. Much, much smarter than me. She's a math teacher and, as anybody knows, the two of us, she obviously is much smarter than me, but she was dumb enough to marry. Just keep it that way. So yes, and I, things like this, this is what I'm talking about. Where do you go where you have a, a board meeting and they sit there and they talk about some, an individual and they say nice things about that individual? I don't see that. And Mark, marking the testament I'm talking about, and as a person who was in the military for twenty years, this is, you guys are special. This is a special situation, and I very much appreciate it. I feel a little embarrassed, but, and by the way, I don't know if I hear all the things that you're saying. I don't know. I, I do my best. I did my best for the veterans. That was my, my, uh, I can't think of anything better to do. Come on. Okay, Charlie, we're gonna give you a job. What's your job gonna be? "Oh, I don't know. You get to sit in your office, veterans walk in, you tell you all, everything that's going on in your life, and then you get to know that." No, I don't want that. That's awesome. Oh, I, I get stuff from veterans that you just can't imagine. They come in and they tell me how this changed their life, or this is wonderful. Thank you very much. We're doing our job. This is the job you people pay me to do. It's the job Mark's gonna do. And we get such a reward out of that. My wife will tell you, I come home and I tell her stuff, and she's like, "Really? Good." It's like that. Or I come home frustrated, feeling like I get my way, which is great. You're right.
It's exactly all that Roxanne said.
And then there was Roxanne. And it's so funny, when I hired her, and she said to me, "So what, what made you decide to hire me?" I said, "That's because you were a bartender." She goes, "No, I'm sorry, what?" I said, "You were a bartender at the American Legion." She goes, "Really?" I said, "Yeah, because you're already listening to veterans. You're listening to them when they lift their hair down. You're listening to them as they dumb on you." I said, "You're gonna do the same thing in this job." And boy, just, she, they come in there and they, they all know her. They all relate to her, and they all love her. So, "Mark, you have it easy." I say that, but don't, don't mess up when Roxanne takes you on a car. And I'm, I'm really glad that this week is coming to an end because I have to tell you, she has been, Roxanne has been awful. The last two weeks, oh my word, I can't, I could not say or do anything. Like, "Rah, rah, rah, rah," constantly. And I said, "What is wrong with you?" And she said, "I'm just, I'm just in a bad mood." And I could not for the life of me figure out what was going on, so I asked her, talked to her, and then I realized, "She's just in a bad mood because I'm leaving?" "Oh, all right." Then I told her, I was a very nice father to her, and I said, "Okay, get over it." That's what you gotta do. So, again, thank you, and really, everybody, thank you very much. I think this is great, this is a support board. Mark, by the way, has a different sense of humor than me, but he has a different sense of humor. And he's very young, so maybe around that. So you're only gonna deliver bad news to me?
Listen, we're gonna have to leave this meeting tomorrow, believe me.
The only other business I have is that we need to have a very short legislative meeting, probably in the seventh, so...